The number of prime numbers P, we have to find out the prime values we can take such that these inequality is satisfied. What is that one? P always lies between nineteen ninety nine factorial plus one less than P less than nineteen ninety nine factorial plus nineteen ninety nine. Seems like a little complex question. A prime number is a subset of natural numbers. How many natural numbers are there between these two numbers? Nineteen ninety nine factorial plus one and nineteen ninety nine factorial plus nineteen ninety nine which are prime numbers. So the next number will be nineteen ninety nine factorial plus two and the next number will be nineteen ninety nine factorial plus three. And the last number, one number just less than this will be nineteen ninety nine factorial plus nineteen ninety. How many numbers among these numbers are prime numbers? Very interesting question. First, we will discuss a concept. Concept is suppose n factorial it is there. It is nothing but n into n minus one into n minus two and so on up to three into two into one. Factorial is nothing but product of all natural numbers from one to a given number. Given number is nineteen ninety nine factorial which is nothing but take nineteen ninety nine, go back nineteen ninety eight and so on up to three into two into one. That is the definition of nineteen ninety nine factorial. If you observe closely, nineteen ninety nine factorial is multiplied by two. Any number multiplied by two, it becomes an even number. So this is definitely an even number. Two is again an even number. Even number plus even number, it is an even number. There is no prime number other than two which is an even number. There is no prime number other than two which is an even number. So first number cannot be a prime number. Nineteen ninety nine factorial, these multiplied by three, that means this number is divisible by three. Any number multiplied by three becomes a multiple of three. A multiple of three is nothing but three into something. Three is also a multiple of three. If I add two numbers which are multiples of three, answer will be a multiple of three. Six plus nine is fifteen. Nine plus twelve is twenty one. Twenty one plus fifteen is thirty six. If I add two numbers which are multiples of three, answer will be a multiple of three. If it is a multiple of three, it will be called as a composite number. There is no number other than three which will be perfectly be divisible by three and a prime number. So any multiple of three other than three is considered to be a composite number. It cannot be a prime number. Similarly, nineteen ninety nine factorial plus four. Just now we discussed nineteen ninety nine factorial is an even number because one of the value in that product is two. Any number multiplied by two, it is an even number. D is an even number. Four is also an even number. Even number plus even number, it is an even number. I hope the idea it is clear. Similar logic, you can go to the next number. Nineteen ninety nine factorial plus five. D is divisible by five because it contains five. Plus five. If I add two numbers which are divisible by five, answer will be divisible by five. Any number other than five, if it is divisible by five, it is a composite number. Nineteen ninety nine factorial, it is nothing but an even number. These also an even number. Even number plus even number, answer will be an even number. There is no even number other than two which is a prime number. Answer is no value, no prime value we can take in this question. Very, very good question and exam replica question. No prime value P takes satisfying these equation. No prime value P takes. The underlying root cause of this problem is after plus whatever the values are there, whether it is two, three, four, five till nineteen ninety eight. All these are actually a part of this number because the number, the numerical value after plus is a part of nineteen ninety nine factorial. Obviously, it will never be resulting in a prime number. Very, very good question. How to find out the prime numbers between two natural numbers and that natural number is nothing but factorial plus one? Can factorials can factorial numbers how to do it if it is a prime number or a composite number? This is one variety. There is also another question that will be given. I hope this question is crystal clear to you. Crystal clear to you. Very interesting problems, variety of questions which we will discuss. Suppose one more question. Suppose if the question is like this is seventeen factorial minus one is seventeen factorial minus one. Prime or composite? Take two or three similar questions based on how to check whether a number is a prime number or a composite for a factorial is twenty factorial is twenty factorial is twenty factorial plus one plus eleven, prime or composite is twenty factorial plus eleven, prime or composite. Another question, another question. What is the reminder, what is the reminder? When twenty three factorial is divided by seventy. Three more questions we will create along with this question so that you will understand how to use it. First question is seventeen factorial minus one, prime or composite. It's a very good question. The next two questions are quite easy. Twenty factorial, twenty factorial is nothing but twenty into nineteen into eighteen and so on up to three into two into one, three into two into one. These contains eleven. Twenty factorial contains eleven. This also contains eleven. If I add two numbers which are divisible by eleven, answer will be divisible by eleven. There is no number other than eleven which is divisible by eleven. So answer for this question is composite. Answer for this question is composite. Next one, reminder when twenty three factorial is divided by seventy. Twenty three factorial is nothing but twenty three into twenty two into twenty one and so on up to seventeen till one divided by seventy. Twenty three factorial is nothing but the product of all the natural numbers from twenty three to one. It contains seventeen. So seventeen ones are seventeen, reminder zero, reminder zero. Another question. When the denominator is a part of the numerical value for the factorial given in the question, reminder is zero. First question, very interesting question. Is seventeen factorial minus one, prime or composite? Yesterday, we discussed Wilson's theorem. Reminder when P minus two factorial divided by P, it is nothing but one. Reminder when P minus two factorial when divided by P, reminder it is nothing but one. So if I use the same concept, seventeen factorial divided by nineteen, nineteen is a prime number. P minus two factorial divided by P, it is nothing but one. One minus one, it is zero. Reminder is zero. That means it is divisible by nineteen. If it is divisible by nineteen, what will be the answer for this question? Answer for this question will be, it will be a composite number. I hope the idea it is clear. One question present in the P P T, I created three more questions so that you will understand the various kinds of questions of checking whether the numbers are prime or composite for a factorial related problems. Reminder when P minus two factorial when divided by P, reminder it is one. So seventeen factorial divided by nineteen. It is one, one minus one, it is zero. If the reminder is zero, the number is divisible by nineteen. If it is divisible by nineteen, it is called a composite number. I hope the idea it is clear. Second question, find the number of factors for sixteen factorial. Now, the second question talks about how to find out the factors for a factorial numbers. Sixteen factorial. First, we will see the concept. Concept. Suppose if you see four factorial, four factorial is nothing but product of all natural numbers from four to one, from four to one. Four factorial, this value is nothing but twenty four. This also can be written as two cube into three power one, two cube into three power one. First concept, any factorial, any factorial can be written as any factorial can be written as power of prime basis. Please make a note of it. If there is a factorial, you can write it as a power of a prime basis. Any factorial can be written as a power of prime basis. Four factorial can be written as two cube into three. Now, from four to one, I am multiplying all the natural numbers. What are the prime numbers from one to four? Two and three are the prime numbers. Two and three are the prime numbers. That is the reason prime bases are only two and three. Now, what should be the highest power of two? Divide these four. Two twos are four. What is these two twos are four? Two ones are two, two twos are four. Again, power of four is also a power of two. Again, divide. Two ones are two. What is this one? D is nothing but four ones are four. Any multiple of four is also a multiple of two. So two plus one, I got it three. Take the given number, divide it successively by two and check it out how many times it is going add all these values. Similarly, four, three ones are three. Only three multiple it is there. So that is the reason it is two cube into three power one. Any factorial can be written as a power of a prime basis. Any factorial can be written as a power of prime basis. Second example. Second example. Now listen carefully. Example, if it is a ten factorial. Ten factorial is nothing but product of all the natural numbers from ten to one. Step number one. From one to ten, what are all the prime numbers present? Two power, three power, five power and seven power. So seven will come only one time, seven ones are seven. Five will come, five twos are ten. So it is two times. Similarly to how many times it will come? Two fives are, two twos are, two ones are. Two power eight, this will come. Three threes are, three ones are. It is three power four. So ten factorial can be written as two power eight into three power four into five square into seven power one. First, make a note of this important key point. Any factorial can be written as a power of prime basis. Any factorial can be written as a power of prime basis. I hope this concept is clear. Based upon this concept, let us solve this question. Question is find the number of factors for sixteen factorial. Sixteen factorial, sixteen factorial is nothing but product of all the natural numbers. Product of all the natural numbers from sixteen to one. Product of all the natural numbers from sixteen to one. So what are all the prime numbers from one to sixteen? There will be two is a prime number, three is a prime number, five is a prime number, seven is a prime number, eleven is a prime number, thirteen is a prime number. Only thirteen ones it will go. Eleven, it will go one times. Seven, it will go two times. So for five, five threes are fifteen. It will go three times. If it is three. Three fives are fifteen, three ones are three. Five plus one, it is six. If it is two, two eight, two fours are, two twos are, two ones are. Eight, twelve, fifteen. Sixteen factorial as a power of prime basis is nothing but two power fifteen into three power six into five power three into seven square into eleven power one into three power one. Now, how to find out the factors? Suppose if the example it is twelve. Twelve is nothing but two square into three power one. Write all the powers of two starting from zero to two. Write all the powers of three starting from zero to one. Two power zero into three power zero. One ones are one, one is a factor. One into three, three is a factor. Two into one, two is a factor. Two into three, six is a factor. Four into one, four is a factor. Four into three, twelve is a factor. So totally, it is three into two. Totally, there are six factors for this given number. So what we did, we did from a zero to the given power, zero to the given power for the other prime base. Zero to fifteen, it is sixteen. Zero to six, it is seven. Zero to three, it is four. Zero to two, it is three. Zero to one, it is two. Zero to one, it is two. So the number of factors for these number is sixteen into seven into four into three into two into two. I hope the idea it's clear. Don't waste your time in calculating it. Answer should be divisible by seven. Answer should be divisible by three. Use the divisibility rules for three, seven, four and everything. Eliminate the answer options. Learning from this question, how to write down a factorial as a power of prime basis? How to find out the number of factors for a given number? So if it is twelve, two square into three power one. Zero to two, three cases. Zero to one, two cases. Three into two, six cases. Zero to fifteen, sixteen cases. Zero to six, seven cases. Zero to three, four cases. Zero to two, three cases. Zero to one, two cases. Zero to one, two cases. I hope the idea it is clear. So it is nothing but one twelve into twelve fours are forty eight. One twelve into forty eight, whatever the answer that you get it, that itself is the answer. Idea it is clear. Second question is based on factors. Third question. Most of the students will do a mistake in this question. First, we will see the concept. First, we will see the concept, then we will execute the concept. Suppose if there is a natural number N one equal N to twelve and there is another natural number N two equal N to eighteen. What is the highest common factor? What are, what is the highest common factor that will divide twelve and eighteen which is nothing but six? What is the least common multiple that will divi- that will get divided by twelve and eighteen which is nothing but thirty six? I hope it is clear, right? H C F, H C F is nothing but a, write down all the factors of twelve, all the factors of eighteen. Take the factors common and take the highest factor common. Similarly in L C M. Write all the multiples of twelve, write all the multiples of eighteen, take all the multiples common, take the smallest number. Now, in our, all our school textbooks, it is written that twelve into eighteen equal N to six into thirty six. Most of the students will by heart this formulae. N one into N two equal N to L C M into H C F. N one into N two equal N to L C M into H C F. They will by heart this. So they will say that seventy five into eight sixty four equal N to two forty into something. Please, please hold on for one minute. Understand the root cause of a problem. Does six divide twelve? Does six divide twelve? Definitely, it will divide. Factor anyway will definitely divide number. Does number get divides multiple? Obviously, multiple is nothing but twelve into something. So definitely, L C M is getting divided by the number and number is getting divided by H C F. H C F divides the number, number divides L C M. One important point, please write down. H C F always divides L C M. H C F always divides L C M. H C F always divides L C M. Please make a note of it in your notebook. Product of two natural numbers equal N to L C M into H C F. Product of two natural numbers equal N to L C M into H C F. This concept holds good only when H C F divides L C M. You don't need to specify it. H C F definitely divides L C M. H C F is a, nothing but a factor of a given number. Number is nothing but a factor of L C M. Definitely, H C F divides L C M. Now, let us see. What is H C F given in the question? H C F given in the question is seventy five. What is the L C M given in the question? It is nothing but eight sixty four. Just now we discussed it. H C F divides L C M. Is seventy five dividing eight sixty four, seventy five, ones are seventy five. One fourteen, seventy five twos are one fifty. H C F does not divide L C M. You don't need to do anything else. Answer for this question is data inconsistent. Data inconsistent, data inconsistent. There is an errata in the question. There exist no two natural numbers whose H C F can be seventy five and L C M is eight sixty four. Make a note in your notebook. These are the kind of questions where you will do a lot of silly mistakes because of the not having a complete understanding of the concept hidden in this question. It will not be written in the textbook that H C F divides L C M. But H C F definitely divides L C M. Because H C F is a factor of the number, number is a factor of the L C M. So H C F definitely divides L C M. I hope the idea it is clear. Right? Make a note of it. Answer for this question is H C F divides L C M. I am sure students who know this formulae directly went ahead and substituted seventy five into eight sixty four equal N to two forty into something. If you are doing like this, there is a serious mathematical mistake which you are doing it. Maybe the teacher has taught you that product of two natural numbers equal N to L C M. Right? Probably that is the difference between an ordinary teacher and a great teacher. Great teacher will first say that H C F will definitely divide L C M. H C F obviously, it's an implicit declaration. You don't need to define it. So that is the reason they will write only this. But this is extremely important. Make a note of it. A classic question where you think that it is an easy question and where you will do a lot of mistake in this question. As I keep telling in all my classes, right answer three, wrong answer minus one. You do one incorrect. Four marks you lost it. Like that, you do silly mistakes more than four to five. You are out of the examination. The candidate who is expected by family members and the teachers that he will be a topper eventually will probably get into some thousands of wrongs. Each and every question plays an extremely important role when you are writing Asia's toughest examination like a cat examination. I hope the idea it is clear. Next question, another beautiful question sir. A natural number, a natural number N has X factors. A natural number can always be represented as a power of a prime basis. P one power B, P two power B, P three power C and so on. What are P one, P two, P three? These are all prime numbers. So let us take some prime numbers. These are all prime numbers. Question contains the number two N has two X factors. There there is a natural number N it seems. These number has got X factors. Okay. If I multiply these number by two, the factors became double. Okay. The, if I multiply these number by three, the factors became three by two of the existing factors. Find the number of factors for twelve N in terms of X. Answer is in terms of X. Answer is in terms of X. Because this number is multiplied by two, factors are changing. Definitely, P one should take two and if it is multiplied by three, factors are becoming three by two of X factors. So what we will do is to two prime basis, we will give two and three because that is a part of the question and the factors are changing. Two power A, three power B, five power C and so on. So number of factors are X. How to determine the number of factors? Zero to A, A plus one. Zero to B, B plus one. Zero to C, C plus one and so on. X C is nothing but A plus one into B plus one into C plus one. First point clear, right? Second point, the number two N, number is multiplied by two. So two into two power A, two power A plus one into three power B into five power C and so on. How many factors it has got? Two X. What will be the zero to A plus one will be? A plus two. Zero to B will be B plus one. Zero to C will be C plus one. Let me take these as one and let me take this as two. Let me take this as two. Let me see what is happening if I divide two by one. Two X by X, it is nothing but two. B plus one, B plus one, C plus one, all, everything will be cancelled. A plus two by A plus one. So D is nothing but two A minus E. A equal N to zero. We got the value of A as zero. A is nothing but the power of two. Okay. First thing we did it, number two X we did it. Next, three N has three X plus by two. So let me do three N. Three N is nothing but two power A, three into three power B. Three power B plus one into five power C and so on. How many factors it will have? Three X by two factors it will have. Three X by two, it is nothing but zero to A, A plus one. Zero to B plus one, B plus two, C plus one and so on. So if I do three divided by one, again I will do three X by two by X. It is nothing but three by two. Equal N to. A plus one, A plus one cancel. B plus two by B plus one. B plus two by B plus one. Three B minus two B. B, three minus, four minus three one. So B equal N to one. Based upon these two conditions, this condition and this condition, I am able to generate a value for A and B. What is the value of A? Value of A is zero. What is the value of B? Value of B is one. A is zero and B is one. Now see here. A is zero and B is one. Now let us write down in the next slide. N is nothing but two power A into three power B into five power C. X C is nothing but A plus one B plus one into C plus one and so on. What is that we got? A equal N to zero. What is that we got? B equal N to one. A zero we got and B one we got. So X C is nothing but zero plus one, one. One plus one, two into C plus one and so on. So C plus one into and so on. It is nothing but X by two. X by two equal N to C plus one into and so on. Now what is the question? Find the number of factors for twelve N. Twelve N, twelve is nothing but two square into three power one. N is nothing but two power A into three power B. I will substitute the value of A and B in the next step. So twelve N equal N to twelve N equal N to. D is A is zero. Two square into two power zero, two square. B is one. Three power one into three power one, three power two into five power C and so on. So D is nothing but two square into three square into these five power C. How many factors are there for this number? Two square means zero to two three, zero to two three. Remaining it is C plus one and so on. C plus one and so on is nothing but X by two. Nine into X by two. Answer for this question is nine X by two. Very, very good question. In the previous session, number is given, factors we have found out. Factor is given, number is given. Now, no value for number is given, no value for factors is given. It is represented by some variables and very easily, step by step, you can solve it. Remember, any number can be written as a power of a prime basis because the question is two N and three N. Definitely, two power A, three power B can come. Remaining all are prime basis. So what I did is I just understood the definition of how to determine the factors and I did it slowly. So first equation, first step number one is write this, next write this, divide two by one, divide three by two and slowly you can do it. Idea it is clear, right? Answer is nothing but nine X by two. Very, very good question sir. A very good ex- exam model question. Now, these are very highly important sir, very, very important, highly repeated concept. Highly repeated model. Please write down. Very, very important, highly repeated model. Highly repeated model. But before we solve this question, let us first see the concept. Let us first see the concept. The first concept is number of ways, number of ways of writing a number. First write down sir. Number of ways of writing a number as a product of, as a product of two integers. As a product of two integers, it is nothing but two times the number of factors. Two times the number of factors. When it will be two times the number of factors? When the question contains variables. If the question contains variables, use these logic. If the question contains variables, it is nothing but ordered pair. What do you mean by an ordered pair? Order in which you write the variables matters. A into B is different from B into A. Number of ways of writing a number as a product of two integers, it is nothing but two times the number of factors. Why two into came? Plus into plus C is plus. Minus into minus is also plus. So product of two integers. For example, twelve is there. Twelve it is there. Twelve need Twelve it is there. Twelve need to be written as A into B. What are A and B? A and B are integers. A into B equal N to twelve. A and B are integers. One into twelve. Two into six, three into four. Please observe the first example. A is taking one, B is taking twelve. So the next case reverse is also different. A is taking twelve and B is taking one. Both are different. If the variables are present in the question, use ordered pair, use ordered pair. Six into two and four into three, four into three, one, two, three, four, five, six. Twelve is nothing but two square into three power one, three into two. Totally six factors are there, six factors. But this can also be negative into negative because it is an integer. Minus into minus is plus, plus into plus is also plus, minus two into minus six. Minus three into minus four, minus twelve into minus one, minus six into minus two. Minus four into minus three. I hope it is clear why it is two into number of factors. Why it is two into number of factors. I am going to use this concept to solve the problems very very easily. Number of ways of writing a number as a product of two integers. It is given by two times the number of factors. Positive into positive it is positive, negative into negative it is also positive. If the question contains variables, question contains variables, use ordered pair. Ordered pair means the way in which the ordering it is there. That matters. A into B is not equal N to B into E. This is the first step. Second step. Second step, if the equation is of the form. A by X plus B by Y equal N to one by C. A by X plus B by Y equal N to one by C. You can directly write it as X minus A C, Y minus B C. Equal N to A into B into C square. It is not A B C whole square. It is A into B into C square, C square, not A B C whole square. What are A B C? A B C are nothing but the numerical values. A B C are nothing but the numerical values. A B C are nothing but the numerical values. Okay, point number three. X cannot take zero, Y cannot take zero. X cannot take zero, Y cannot take zero. Now see here, how am I solving this question? Three by A plus minus two by B. Equal N to one by fifteen. This is the question. A is nothing but capital three. B is nothing but minus two. Now, A by X plus B by Y equal N to Y. One by C. So directly you can write it. I will also tell you from where you got this equation. After I solve this problem, I will take an easy question and I will explain. So directly you can write it as X minus A C. Three into fifteen, forty five, A minus forty five. B minus B C. So this is nothing but plus minus into minus. Two fifteen are thirty, A into B into C square. A into B into C square. Now see here, A minus forty five. Into B plus thirty. Let me factorize this one. So this is nothing but minus two into three. Fifteen is nothing but three square into five square. So it is minus two into three cube into five square. Minus two into three cube into five square, minus two into three cube into five square. Minus two into three cube into five square. Now see here, if I consider this as one variable. This as another variable and both the variables are taking integers. Right hand side it is minus, so definitely plus into minus is minus. Minus into plus is also minus. De- so definitely it will be two times the number of factors. One will be two factors, next three will be four factors, two will be three factors. Two will be three factors. I hope the idea it is clear right? So this is nothing but. Two into two into four into three, four fours are sixteen, sixteen threes are forty eight. But in this one, there is a case minus forty five into thirty. Minus forty five into thirty. A minus forty five is minus forty five. What is A value? Zero. B plus thirty is thirty. B will be zero. A zero, B zero. Can A and B, can, can it take zero? No. So it is nothing but minus one. It is nothing but minus one. So answer for this question is forty seven. All you have to do is nothing but. A into B into C square, just factorize this number. Three into two into fifteen square. Fifteen is three square into five square. So minus two into. Three cube into five square. So total factors will be two. Two into four into three, double it and subtract it one. I hope the idea it is clear. If the right hand side it is a positive value, plus into plus C is plus. Minus into minus is also plus. If the right hand side is a negative value. Again we will get negative into plus C is minus, plus into negative is also negative. Again same two cases you will get. Answer for this question is single step. Two into number of factors minus one, two into number of factors minus one. Why that minus one came into picture? Because there is a case where A is becoming zero and B is becoming zero. A and B cannot become zero. Why? Because it is there in the denominator. If it is there in the denominator, A and B cannot take zero. So that is the reason we are subtracting. So answer for this kind of questions is A by X. Single step within five seconds you can solve it. If you understand the approach, A by X plus B by Y equal N to one by C. Answer is nothing but two into number of factors minus one. Two into number of factors minus one, this is the answer. Two into number of factors minus one. Let us solve some problems. One by X plus one by Y equal N to one by twelve. What will be the answer? Two into number of factors for which number? A into B into C square number. A into B into C square. So this is nothing but X minus twelve, X minus A C. Y minus B C, A into B into C square. Twelve is nothing but two square into three whole square. So this is nothing but two power four into three square. Answer is two into number of factors minus one. Ten threes are thirty, thirty minus one, twenty nine. I hope the idea it is clear. Suppose if the question is two by X plus three by Y equal N to one by. Eight, what will be the answer? Answer is nothing but A into B into C square. So it is nothing but two power seven into three power one. So twice the number of factors, two into eight into two minus one. Eight fours are thirty two, thirty two minus one. Answer is nothing but thirty one. I hope the idea it is clear. In case if you enjoy the shortcut. Write kindly, let me know. Write through a like button. I hope it is clear. One by X plus one by Y equal N to one by twelve. Straight forward. What you do is just you determine A into B into C square, A into B into C square. Do two into number of factors. Why we are doing two into? Plus into plus C is plus, minus into minus is also plus, two into number of factors minus one. Two into number of factors minus one. If I have to make it little complex, how I will?